Right, here we go. It's seven o'clock. I'm going by everybody who wants to, I'm going by my clock here. So it's 1900 hours, it's Wednesday the 8th of March, yes 2017. This is meeting for Open Town Council, welcome to these councillors here and also to be members of the public in Calgary. And so we'll go straight in at number one, which is apologies, so apologies.
Commissioner Michael Haley, who is away from town himself.
Away, yeah.
So I'm away.
Okay, so Commissioner Haley.
And Commissioner Peter O'Neil.
Okay, so if I can have a proposal for Michael Haley by Stan, seconded by Richard, all in favour. That's unanimous, according to Sandra, yeah. And then a proposal for Peter, Stan seconded by Martin, all those in favour, that's unanimous as well. Members are asked to declare if required any disposable, peculiar interests they may have in respect to items on the agenda, and any other interest they may have in respect to items on the agenda, and also you might inform the clerk of any changes of your interests. If anybody's got any, make sure they're in the book, or everybody else will raise them now, and also make sure you sign the book so that you attended tonight.
We're all in the process of sending the forms to the all councillors that seem to do update their ready support.
There is a point of whatever it's called, I looked it up when we were going to have seven members about quorum and the fact that four members would have to vote to approve it. How does it sit now that we're only six members? How many votes will be required to pass something? Because I didn't quite work it out.
I believe Haley...
I had worked it out on seven, but it had to be four.
I believe here it's, quorum is four, and what is it? It's the majority votes, I believe.
Yeah, which on seven worked out four, it had to be four people voted for it. But I didn't want to get into that, that's why I'm pointing it out now.
Well, you mean, you mean four people vote for it, or four people vote in total?
No, four people have to vote for it to pass if there are seven members this time.
Right.
I didn't send the...
Where is that across?
They came from the Local Government Act on voting in quorum. But I don't know, there is a calculation, and I don't know whether it drops down or has to get higher when the numbers get lower.
I believe that outstanding orders state, and I haven't got my set with me, that quorum is four.
Yeah, that's probably a factor.
And when it comes to voting, that it's the majority vote, but... Well, let's everyone make sure that you vote for it. Not leaving anybody there.
But they've got voting to interest in items on the agenda.
No, no. So the minutes, to confirm the minutes of the extraordinary meeting. Was it an ordinary meeting, it was an ordinary, it was an ordinary meeting, it was on the 8th of February, yeah, so just to confirm the minutes of that meeting, so anybody have any final observations about the maintenance point?
Martin. But we should be approving the minutes as well for the extra meeting, otherwise we're going to have a gap.
We didn't have an extra meeting.
We did not have an extra meeting. Oh, that's cancelled, sorry, I'm sorry. I've shared the main, as per request, with the office regarding this, I apologise for doing this now. Basically, the first problem I have with the minutes is 318/17. There's no minute of the clerk asking for a show of informal pattern to, which wasn't seconded, to show that members agreed with extending £500.
I think you're just looking for a general census, because you were telling us what you're going to do anyway.
But it's something that happened in council, and I believe it shows the minutes of what happened.
Well, can we clarify that the £500 is, I don't need a decision of the council.
I'm not arguing that, but what I'm saying is that an event happened at council that's fifty minutes.
Well, I've limited it for council for council information.
But you hadn't limited it here at all, it's like it didn't happen, so I shouldn't argue, but that's all I'm going to say.
Okay, so what was that, on 31817?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
And also 31917, there was another member of the public here who made a deputation and asked a question, but it's not limited.
Can I, can I come in there?
Yes, I'm happy, members of the public who made a statement, it doesn't have to be limited.
Well, I like that. I know, I know, I know, that ordinarily, I was a bit surprised at the depth that we reported on Council Box's public deputation, but yes.
Yes, because we're not actually supposed to be naming people that are points also in the agenda, where council has been named, where as well, where they shouldn't be named, because, but I'm not pointing those out. But the most serious matter is the last minute, which is 3317, which just minutes that we have an exempt item.
33?
The last one, Chairman. We should be giving a description of the item, and we should be giving the outcome to the public.
Which number is that?
The last minute, we can't just put out in the public domain that we're, you know, this is, I shouldn't say, but this is not pre-1972. We have the Localism Act of 2011, 2012, which says that we should be open and transparent. Since the former clerk has left, the exempt has been used practically at every single meeting.
Not relevant by the law.
No, I'm saying, I don't like...
Well, you can do that on constant, yes, please do.
The nature of business, it's part of the mention of the minute. The matter's concerned relative to a code of conduct statement and a contractual matter.
It doesn't say that in the minute.
It doesn't, so, that's sent them.
Well, he doesn't say that we, about the cemetery and what we agreed not to pay and things like that.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't specify.
Because we can't, we can't, we can't, it's a rule. And also, one last point, at that meeting, it's not, we haven't even seen the exempt minute, but at that meeting, the council alone waved the papers and said this item is no longer exempt. So I'd like to see the minute as well, that you keep saying that we're allowed to see. We can't accept these minutes if we don't see them.
Okay, well, I'll leave all those points, have you raised your email that I did?
I did, and as usual, I didn't get a response.
Well, I'll leave it with, because at the end of the day, it's the...
But I'd like to see that minute.
I'd like to see that minute.
Can I come back to you, as we come to the original point, to make the thing that under the public bodies that mentioned, meetings act, they specify the three areas that are, are classed as exempt. That's contracts, legal matters, and matters relating to employment. Those words are used in that minute.
But the action wasn't nothing.
Sorry, can I just stop it there? No, I'm going to, Martin, stop.
Sorry, Chairman.
Right, you made a point, the clerk will take it away and look at it, and will be addressed separately, but we're not going to spend the next two hours debating the minutes.
But I'd like to see the exempt minute, please.
When do you want to see it?
Now, we can't accept it if we haven't seen it.
Thank you, Stan, where is the exempt minute? All right, if you want to come around and have a look over Alison's shoulder, you have to say...
It should be distributed.
Right, I'll give you the chance to come around and have a look at it, Martin, if you don't want to come around and have a look at it, I'm going to move on. Right, I'm looking for somebody who's proposed to accept the minute, and there have been comments made, and they've been recorded by the clerk, so I'm looking, proposed by Stan, seconded by Sally Anne, all those in favour.
I was only there for half an hour.
Three, four, so you have standing then, so four, four, one extension, two extensions?
One again.
Do you want, do you want your name minising on that one?
No.
I don't agree in the future that when the council sends an email through, that a copy of it is attached to the minutes. Because that way, there's a, because it tells you, don't draw away.
What we could do is circulate the exempt item page to councils for the next meeting, and then they can have the copy and approve it then. So that we're free at the moment, the minute has passed in circulation, is that...
Hasn't been circulated.
No, it was part of the minutes, sorry.
Can we, right, and then I'll be contentious when I'm on the stage. Chairman, I've got a meeting tomorrow, I'd like to get on this meeting. Well, I'll leave all that. Right, chairmen and members report, send received reports, I believe some people have sent it off. Oh, let's, who's there first? In the desk, I need a report to refuse. Right, okay. I didn't refuse it, well, I made a recommendation, I made a suggestion. Michael, yeah, so Michael Haley has already sent a report attached to the agenda. I could report on some of the things I've been doing, but there's nothing in time, so I'll be a bit... Well, that's fine, if you're going to say it, so I don't want to repeat it.
The report on the Rockland service at Peachwood Cathedral, my husband and I were invited by the High Sheriff of Rockland to the service, although this event was open to everyone. The event was well attended, and the service itself was a place very enjoyable, most enjoyable. We met the Sheriff, we met the Sheriff of Vermont and spoke at length about our trip some years ago to the Vermont State Fair. We told him that we'd met the President of the Laisse de Rockland in Vermont. The advantage of attending these sorts of functions does mean that I managed to promote the town. So I got quite a bit of work done. Opening Bloom meeting last night, I attended the meeting as representative of Open Town Council. It never ceases to amaze me how much work is put in by these volunteers, and much credit is given to their hard work. The Christ Light fundraising event was a combined effort, as far as I could tell, between Elkhorn and Bloom, and then the WI made a lot of cakes and sold those. They raised £433 on some hot pens, but not much, for their next project. The transference of that Geoffrey Hudson statue at the museum garden is well in hand, and will be unveiled on the 1st of April. Opening Bloom will attend the agricultural show as an awareness campaign. I emphasise that because we don't ever attend. Their project for the new arboretum is growing well, but their new project is to have a shed. This is a national scheme for workplaces. They hope to elect it on their allotment, which is, which they're already hired. The purpose of the shed will be to encourage workshops like third box building. Altogether, a fine evening of enthusiasm and dedication to the enhancement of our town. Thank you.
Seven now. Sorry, but no, we've got the clerk's report waiting on. One thing I tend to do is, because I do this write-up each month for the paper, I tend to sort of... It's a public report, so...
But you look very handsome when you're...
Pointing your hair club.
You might glasses on.
Well, let's have, let's see what the clerk's report states.
Can I refer back to the minutes, 31817? The second bullet point, the legal advice matter, just a report that I have received that advice from a member of the person and a Queen's councillor. And the advice is extremely informative, certainly well worth the money, but it is complicated, it comprises five pages of script. So I think that it perhaps ought to be considered by the Policies Group Chairman, if they're going to meet next week, and I circulate the report to the members, so that they know what's in the report.
Is that just to talk, or is it just to the Policies Group?
Well, I don't mind, Policies Group.
Well, if we're going to do that, the Policies Group review anything, and then bring it to council.
Bring it to council, yeah, yeah. That's that. The second item I've been reporting is that, the same minute, 31817. The final bullet point, that's in connection with a comment that has been made publicly against me. I have now received confirmations from the parish council concern, and I will be writing to a member of the council in connection with that in due course. And then, also, if the Policies Committee meeting is held shortly, I can also bring that group up to date on the code of conduct complaint that was lodged with the Rockland County Council monitor officer before Christmas or something. And then detail matters, minute number 3366, I think, parish, parish council members or members, they asked for the town council's support to press into town council to reinstate the full-time conservation.
Oh, yeah, that was a letter, wasn't it, an email, yeah.
I did to them, confirming that the town council does support it. The second item is the, we have the draft housing and homelessness strategy paper sent us, and I've acknowledged that, that is on, I think, the agenda, I think, for tonight. And finally, the matter concerning the Open Town Partnership, that's the 106, well, not the 106 money, but the money from the Horst League Development. I have advised the Open Town Partnership of the council's decision at the last meeting. That's my bit of report, I think Alison has...
I met with the Rockland County Council Officer today regarding the safety inspection of the surface, and she's more than happy, she thinks it's okay. With due pleasure, carried out their quarterly play equipment inspection yesterday. Other than the big swing, one of the big swings that cuts the surface damage, and one of the five swings frame and royals is the surface damage, which I've asked for a quote, and...
That's called for, isn't it?
Yeah. And it's been asked by councillor Brooks, we lost to know the correspondence law. Well, we've had a letter from Settler Sisters, Open Town Partnership, Jane Jones, Rockland Corps Society, Rockland County Council, Open Town Partnership, Apogee, and Open and Bloom Society.
Can I object to that being read in that way, saying that because of councillor Brooks? When I wrote to the clerk, he said that it would become an agenda item, so that councillors knew what was going on. I'm getting a little tired of this picking on, and to point it out like that, to me, is unacceptable.
In that, in that, I think we need to...
I do find it funny councillors doing things like that.
Martin, I think we need to just bounce out through Policies Procedures and add it into our, yeah? So there's a request being made by councillor, but as you know, unilateral decisions cannot be made. I've got a problem with it, what Martin's asked for, we've got a problem, I know we have to have a log anyway, but let's just make sure that we do it by the book. And, yeah, and if it does appear in the agenda in future as a specific item, as a standing item, you know, the council have to agree to accept it as a standing item, that's what I'm saying. The key, defecation for the public, item six, any members of the public, do you think you want to say, add a comment to the article, do you have one on the agenda? No?
I thought you'd not write it down.
For seven.
I'm focused on, I'm focused on, are you proud?
Yeah. I said it might get cold in there.
What do you want, do you want it off?
Because it's... Right, item seven is suspension of standing order 32. This is to agree to suspend the standing order 32 of the council vacancy and co-op councilors. In order that item eight on the agenda can be considered. So proposal, I propose that from the Chair, that we suspend the co-op process. Proposed by Adam, seconded by Martin, all those in favour? That's unanimous, good. So now that means that we, item eight is the co-op of new members. The three people, applicants, have shown an interest in being co-opted onto the council. I believe all three are here, that's Hanski Wood, David Longley, and Andrew Bennett. This, there's no, we don't need to go through this with any comments or any questions, because we've already suspended the standing order. So all there would remain for me to say is, do the council want to co-opt these on block, or do they want to do them individually? That's if the three people are presumed, the three people that are back, who still want to be considered standing.
I consider we do it on block.
On block, so are you proposing on block that we co-opt the three candidates?
Can I just ask, if you're taking questions, but can I just check that the clerk has checked the eligibility before we do that?
Yes, it has been done.
The assistant clerk will confirm that a form was given to all three candidates, which specified the eligible candidate, I can never pronounce it.
Eligibility, yeah.
Not the inclusion, for the co-op councillors, and also the disqualifications. And it all been very complicated.
Yeah, and that was, I mean, there was also contact made with people at Roney House House as well, just to double check. You know, we've checked, checked, and double checked. So proposal by Stan that we co-opt the three, that's proposed by Stan, seconded by Martin, all those in favour? That's unanimous as well then. So at the moment, if all three are here, now what we can do now, I can suspend the meeting for a couple of minutes, or stop the meeting, and give you the opportunity, if you want, you could now sign papers and actually join us at the table, and probably be involved in the remaining meeting for that, until, if you want to do that. Yeah, okay, what I'm doing is now, yeah, it's now 1923, so I'm going to, we'll take a short recess at 1923. And I will reconvene when we all come back, so, and that... Joyce, can we just, just anywhere on the bottom?
Just put it anywhere, I don't know what audio you've gone on. Um, you're in, I was just telling you about my memory. I did a job when you get one. So I watch your space.
Yeah, that'll be on the next meeting, I'll take the job. Right, so it's 1929, and the meeting has reconvened after a short recess, okay?
Two members, new members in the office.
Yes, and we've reconvened with three new members, so now, three more, so... Yes, I have my hair specially cut this time. Okay, let's crack on then, right, item nine. Item nine is the working groups, in-staying groups, strategy assurance, to receive written, and we receive written reports, don't worry. So anybody got any comments or observations, it's Richard.
Just the general, we all have, I think, the Hendrick seat one, for item the general nine, which councillor Haley produced. As you know, both Ian's eye are the council representatives on the Labour Party plan, if it's it. And he has, I think you will have read this already, the reports he has given to the council. If I can just suggest a couple of things which will need your consideration. As you can see from the backgrounds, the budget for the current fiscal year, going to the Labour plan of £6,000. Some orders have been placed with the consultants that we're using for that. But they will be advised in the coming fiscal year, and I think there may be some more money available for that. What I want to speak about this evening are the printing costs for the questionnaire, which is due to be distributed around the town the last week of March. And that is in hand, with me, I think, rather than anybody else at the moment, but that will be done. The printing is occurring at the moment. As you can see from what Michael has written already, the council has already agreed to some of £2,300 for the printing of the questionnaire. And that is, in fact, going to be slightly more than that, because of the number of drafts which have had to be gone through. And the final estimate, as you can see, is £2,620. In addition to that, there is a requirement obviously to print the envelope, and with logo etcetera, and that amounts, I think, to £757, as you can see under the proposal. In addition, as Michael says in his final sentence under the proposal, there is a possibility that some people will use the prepaid option for sending these back, which is £60 an envelope. The chances, I think, of us getting a more than 50% of the number we send out coming back to us in one way or another is not very great. And if even 10% of that, of them, decide they're going to post them, rather than put them in all the boxes which we have around the town, that there, and some will do this online, etcetera. One has no idea exactly of how many will come back at £60 a time, but if it's much more than two or three hundred, I'd be surprised, I think. As you can see, £650 has been generated from sponsorship for the questionnaire as well. So I think what councillor Haley was asking for is for the council to allow a slight additional expenditure for the extra for printing the, sorry, printing the questionnaire, and for printing the envelopes. And to some extent, that £650 for sponsorship may help with that, but if it's, if there's some leftover that, from that, then of course, that may go to be posting costs of anyone who's going to send these back via the post. So I can't give an exact figure for that, but leaving that on one side, the total printing would be £3,377, by my estimation here. And so I think what he was asking, was a recommendation, is that we increase the amount we allow the Labour Party plan to spend on the, on the printing as that, £3,377. And then there is this £650 which might go towards the postage costs at the end of the exercise. All I would say finally on this, is that I've only been a member of this particular body for the last couple of months. They have been working very hard indeed, they have produced, I think, a comprehensive questionnaire. There is a lot of work being done around the town at the moment, you may have seen that, as I've already did the other day, that will be at Tesco's, interacting with members of the population of Oakland. And we really do want to get as good a return as we can. So that was the proposal that councillor Haley raised, and I would sort of like to second it.
Can you just, what's the ballpark figure that is?
The ballpark figure for the crimson is £3,377. In other words, it's the £2,620 for the crimson.
I think that's the additional amount that he wants.
Oh, the additional amount, well, I mean, at the moment, according to this, the council has already recommended, or already allowed the sum of £2,300. So it is about £1,000 more than that.
Right, so look, so the additional expenditure equivalent to additional, £1,000.
Additional £1,000, yeah, for the printing, yeah, that's right. Additional one thousand, yeah, for the printing, yeah, that's right.
Okay, any comments or observations from around the table, everybody right, oh, by the way, in council, if, normally if you want to speak, obviously we always speak with the chair, but of course, after a language, it's a bit, it's a bit. And if you raise your hand, indicate that you want to say something. When we're in full council, uh, courtesy of the chain, not necessarily for me, but courtesy of the chain, uh, or the office is that the person speaking will not be sat. Uh, Martin, you want to say something?
Um, thank you to, for, um, but I'm still not clear how much is required.
An extra one thousand pounds of what has already been budgeted.
But we, that figure wouldn't be correct because if, for instance, people did use the envelopes, you need the authority to spend that money. We can't just have a bill. Um, so we need, we need to authorise on the assumption that people are going to use the envelopes. I'm, I'm sorry, I'll try and put it nicely, but this report is not helpful. It, it, it's not clear. Um, going back to the attached reports, which are in the same section, which we get constantly repeated. There's no substance to it. We have not seen the surveys that we're going to be paying for. As councillors, it would be nice to see them when the public asks us questions about them. We don't know, we didn't know anything about the current event that happened at the weekend. Well, you, you did, and so did some other members of the public, but the council is not told, so.
The council's contained, the law is contained in this, this.
But that, that's virtually, it's only been given us to today and the event has gone, but it doesn't even, it doesn't even say in there when the event, it just says we are arranging events at Albi and Tesco. There's no substance to the reports and we're talking of ten people at it round this table where every meeting, this is reproduced. You know, the quantity of paper, which is giving us very, very little information. So I, I can't accept that recommendation because for audit purposes only, we need to give a clear resolution of what the council agreed to spend. And if we can't have a clear figure given to us of what is required to spend. Yes, if people don't use the envelopes and save us money, that means that's a good thing. But we have to give the approval for the expenditure in the first place.
Right, um, I, I'm just going to see, Martin, if you want to answer, I'll just answer.
I'm going to say that these reports are the situation report as they stand at the moment. And, you know, if councillor Brooks is expecting detailed estimates of that order, you're never going to get them. Who knows, who knows how many people will post things back?
No, no, oh, sorry. Well, actually you can't because you've already spoken once, so I'm. I want to see what Richard said that matters.
When Richard's not allowed to speak again because that standard order.
What I'm saying is that the best that the, 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 the group can offer is their knowledge at this time. And they are, since they're asking the council, this is what we know, this is what we estimate.
Okay, mine's quite like the point, that's right. I can't, once a councillor has spoken, I can't allow them to come back. Um, so what I will say is that from what I've understood of what Richard said and from reading the report is that this is where we are, this is what we've done. We think that we're going to go over budget, so we're asking for a number of one thousand pounds. That's a figure that they're stating. You raised a very interesting point that if everybody decides to postage back their prepaid envelopes, it's actually going to cost three thousand nine hundred pounds. That means that we should be budgeting an additional four thousand nine hundred pounds, you know, which, which, which I, I don't, you know, I think there was already some budgeting put in for postage. Does anybody else have any comments or anything? Because otherwise, I, all they'll be looking for is that the council approved the additional expenditure of a thousand pounds. So has anybody else got new comments? Stan?
Well, the only thing I would say is, I, 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 I agree with councillor Brooks, it is a bit unclear for the exact amount. Having said that, um, I'm quite happy to approve the thousand pounds, but certainly no more at the moment.
Yep, and.
Well, I don't know if I should speak because I'm so new to this, but the deep into the last meeting as well. Um, how can you budget for something which is unknown? And not that I know a great deal about councils and things, but the number of people that will reply will be not everybody. And that most of the people who will reply will put them in the box. I mean, obviously very old people might not be able to manage that, but the majority, I'm sure, will put them in the box. But you can't budget for something which is unknown. And either you do it this the proper way and give them the chance to send them back by post, or you don't. And it wouldn't be fair not to, so that's just my opinion.
Okay, then, I'm looking for anybody, if there's any other comments, um. You're frustrated, I'll give you one, see if you can. A point of, a point of information. Uh, I will allow a point of.
The point of information is that, uh, the sponsorship money is not included in that three thousand three hundred and seventy-seven. That's six hundred and fifty pounds which could then go for the post.
And as always, we're definitely set budgets or set money aside. You know, just because it's set aside doesn't mean we necessarily can spend it. So looking, does anybody want to propose that we, um, allow the additional expenditure as outlined in this proposal of one thousand pounds? Proposed by Stan, seconded by, uh, Sally Anne. All of those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And abstention or abstention again, so one again.
It's not clear.
Well, the one again is that I think, can we, uh, it would be handy actually, Richard, if you just make, take out the comments to Michael, that, that, can we make sure that the paperwork is as clear as it can be? To the benefit of the new councillors, um, this, this document, and you've got to see, you'll be hanging on to your documents tonight, you know, most of them. Um, it's laid out so that you can see what's happened from beginning through to end, so just roll through. Um, so it does appear to be repeated maybe when it comes back. Uh, promotions, publicity, working group, one, is this will be included, yes?
Yes.
Is there anything you want to add to this, Sally Anne?
Um, no, I don't want to add anything.
However?
However, there's one that we need to tend to put on a screen, so, and possibly it's from there. I don't know how we go about handling, isn't it, uh?
Uh, right, we will need a general overlap, we will need a general really. Now, when, when we're looking at this, this is starting June the eighteenth. I, I would suggest that in the April meeting, that we have a, a gender item.
Yes.
I can help you with that.
Well, it's Michael's fault, I don't know what to do. So I'm, yeah, absolutely confused about this paradigm.
We'll be needing a gender item.
For ten, do you?
Yeah.
No, we will do a.
Yeah, if we're doing the gender item, just sort of saying that you, uh, want to be able to tend to have the council want to do it. Thing is, we, when it gets out of this, we tend to business. It's less than a certain value, you don't need to get three prices in. It might just be a case of you, you might even go out and speak to some people and then come back and go, right, I'm going to put a paper together, I suppose I did these people, blah, blah. You can do some legwork beforehand, I have done. But let's do, 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 let's do a gender item for April, but in the meantime, keep doing some legwork anyway.
Yeah, I'll just mention, oh, we're on that, the motions, right? And out of, I've been to a meeting this morning, we got in the human cry.
But then there's the High Sheriff in, in waiting.
Which we will talk about in our next promotions meeting and then bring it to council.
Yeah, we, 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 things are a lot clearer, aren't they? Right.
Sheriff.
Yes.